This meeting will now come to order. City Council calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams is here in the building. He'll be here shortly. Councilwoman Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you thanking you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We ask that you will continue to bless us and lead us and guide us in the direction that you would have us to go. Bless this city council and bless the city officials here in Gadsden. Bless those persons in Montgomery. Bless those persons in Washington DC. Give them wisdom to make decisions that are pleasing to you and that are right for your people. As we go into this season of Veterans Day, we ask that you remember all those persons who have given their lives for the sake of this country and the ideals of this country. May they never be forgotten. Bless everyone that has done the uniform of the United States of America. Keep them in your prayers. Keep them safe, dear Lord, and we will continue to give you all praise and all the glory. As we move through these proceedings today, we ask that you will be with us, temper us, guide us, and lead us. We will give you all praise and all the glory. These blessings we ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Our congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the city council meeting held on October the 29th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, can you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of October the 25th through the 31st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Unfinished business ordinance amending business for the year 2014 budget. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It reflects receipt and appropriation of an emergency solutions grant in the amount of $180,000, which is to be distributed as follows. $22,000 to the Love Center, $76,000 to Salvation Army, and $82,000 to 13th Place. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
B is resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 402 Hastings Street. Doris and Don Benefield being the last known owners. This resolution was tabled on October the 22nd for 14 days. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, we'd like to ask for an additional 30-day table at this time.
Second.
Sure anything where the table doesn't have to be discussed.
Those in favor to table the resolution for an additional 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table.
C is an asset assessing a nuisance abatement lien against property located at 310 Bryan Street. No counsel action will be necessary. This has already been abated. This is a time, nine is this is a time and places advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to. Are in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1403 Park Avenue in District 1? Uh, may...
Do you have to read all those names?
No, you don't have to read them.
And the, uh, this, I'm, this property is the state of Alabama and heirs of Looney Chambers and all her children, which is a...
A bunch of them.
A lot of them.
And her grandchildren.
Yeah.
And maybe some great-grandchildren in there, I'm not sure. Does anyone speak, wish to speak in favor of this? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to it? Anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We saw this case in April of 2012. Been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Thank you, Mr. Harbison.
That's a rare thing to thank, Mr. Harbison. I appreciate that, Bill.
You saw that picture that came by you, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, can you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 10, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1415 Gardner Street in District 3. Jack D. Hamilton and Theodore J. Sayashow.
That's close.
Being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Yes, sir.
Come to the microphone, please. State your name and address for the, for the city clerk.
My name is Jack Hamilton, and I live at 2191 Brookdale Road in South Side, Alabama. I'm a part owner of this, uh, property there in Gardner Street. The other property owner lives in, uh, South Carolina, and he's unable to come. But in speaking for him, we would like to be given the opportunity to make some improvements on the property and clean it up and possibly sell it, put it on the market to sell. It's, uh, right there adjacent to Megan Boulevard, and we feel like it's a prime, uh, commercial piece of property. If it was made presentable, then we could possibly find a buyer.
I haven't issued...
I know, I'm just waiting to hear. How much time are you talking about?
Well, uh, the only thing we really need to do is to make some improvements to the building, you know, possibly a roof. It's a block building, it painted. And clean the yard up there. It's got a lot of weeds and growth and stuff like that. So, you know, we're talking about within a period of 30 days, I believe, that we would have it presentable to go on the market. And I have the financial resources to do that. I'm unable to do it myself, you know, because of my age and health reasons. But I have the financial resources to pay someone to do this.
Okay, we'll finish here and then...
Okay.
Does any, is there any other discussion?
Well, yeah, we gotta hear the building part.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'm not necessarily standing here today to speak in favor of a resolution even though my recommendation previously said that. I have had a conversation with Mr. Hamilton and discussed what needed to be done and told him typically, the council does not give more than 30 days, and he felt like that would be enough time for him to do some improvements to the property. I think you're all familiar with the property once you look at the picture. I will say that we had the new John Deere dealership locate just a few lots from this recently and have been a tremendous asset to the, uh, to the community. And so I do see that, and this is commercial property, I do see that there are some possibilities that can take place there. It's a nice level. There are actually two lots that go with this. So we, we would also ask on behalf of the owner that you give him 30 days additional time to try to sell it. Thank you.
Any other people that would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, before we do, 'cause it's obvious you want us to table it, you can't address a table. But I want Mr. Hamilton to understand that you've got 30 days, and that's pretty much solid, 30 days. And you'll probably need to get back with Mr. Harbison at the end of that period, and Mr. Harbison will get with you too, to make sure that, you know, we're in progress and everything is happening. You understand that, Ron? Okay.
This was the old batting cages there on Megan Boulevard, is that correct?
Yeah.
See, I've had a couple of calls in the last couple of years, people wanting to buy that, and I didn't know who owned it. So you're not gonna have any problem trying to sell it. I came by there, I think it was this weekend, like somebody was having a yard sale on that piece of property.
They'd used it for several other things too, without probably the owner's permission. With that, I'll just ask for a 30-day table.
Second.
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Next one is, is this Tuscaloosa Avenue?
Yeah.
Um, ordering abatement of nuisance on property located 1175 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 3. Margaret Melner being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, again, I stand before you and speak in opposition to my own recommendation previously.
That's what I like about you.
I did have a conversation with Ms. Melner's family members this morning, and, you know, circumstances beyond their control. They have not been able to do anything until now, so I'm gonna ask for, for a 30-day table on this, give them opportunity to make some decisions. Thank you.
Brian, you must be a dual agent.
Almost an attorney.
Again, since we can't talk about, discuss on a table, as I said upstairs, Ms. Melner passed away, and they just had a funeral last week, and the family is trying to make some decisions. So they were, they were here earlier. They did talk to you, Brian, yeah, that's what I thought. So I'm gonna, with that, I'm gonna ask for a 30-day table.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
12 is a resolution authoring bid number 3251. The city engineers recommended awarding the bid to McCartney Construction. This is for planning, resurfacing, and traffic stripe on Forest Avenue from 7th to 12th Street. Total cost of this MPO project is $233,756.22 with 20% or $46,751.24 being the responsibility of the city. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
13 is a resolution authorizing agreement with National Bass Fishing Trail. This is for the city to sponsor a tournament to be held June the 25th through the 27th, 2014, by providing meals and lodging in lieu of cash. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
First reading is an ordinance amending business for the year 2014 budget. This is to reflect the receipt and appropriation of grant funds from the Justice Department for purchase of a replacement bulletproof vest. This is a 50% match rent, and the amount is $22,691. The ordinance was presented today, the council votes on it next week.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this ordinance.
Second. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay, I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New businesses, are any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two items I would like to ask. Well, first of all, I have an ordinance amending 2014 budget. Authorizing use of TIF funds for six-year intersection, I'd like for unanimous consent to consider today.
Second.
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
Is there any discussion?
I can explain that a little bit. The New River Trace Goodyear Golf Course development, there was only a couple of ways in and out. Traffic's already really bad, and so the property owners and development company in the city agreed to, where you go to the old pro shop, you can come out and go left towards Hoax Bluff and Glencoe and that side of town and parts of East Gadsden, or you can go straight, still be in East Gadsden, and go, get on the Broad, East Broad and go across to downtown, or get on 759. It's just gonna help ease the traffic flow over there, and we're doing a three-way partnership with them to get that done. It's gonna make it a lot better.
There is a traffic like that, now, that'll be, I guess, where you should come out.
Yeah.
If that whole intersection would be...
The whole intersection would be reworked, but that's, it's gonna be the same intersection.
But you'll be able to get out of there instead of going back up, beside Burger King or on up towards the bridge, yeah.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And the next, Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing agreement with Gadsden Runners Club to sponsor a Rock and Run, uh, event, which was already held on October the 15th in the amount of $2,500. Ask for unanimous consent to consider this resolution today.
Second.
I agree, thank you both.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is, uh, well, this is part of the sponsorship that we had agreed to with the, um, with this Gadsden Runners Club. It's taken us a long, the event has already occurred, but it took them some time to get all of the details and the paperwork and everything they needed to submit to the city for payment of the $2,500.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple of items that I'd like to ask for consideration under new business today. The first one is a, and actually, I'll, I'll bring these up in tandem if I can. One is a resolution authorizing the amendment of a previous resolution to correct the amount. It's regarding a, uh, a purchase, a property purchase price. And then the other is an ordinance, uh, amending the budget, authorizing the use of these funds for the purchase. And I'd like to ask for consideration of both of these today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution and the ordinance today as items of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for passage. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, again, one's a resolution authorizing, uh, the, uh, the purchase price. It's $80,000 for the purchase of property on, uh, on the corner of 4th of Locust Street and 5th. And, uh, and of course, this is to be used for, um, additional parking. And then, of course, the ordinance is amending the budget to, uh, to reflect this. And we'll be using, uh, tax increment funding, uh, to fund this purchase.
You wanna explain what tax is and what financing is?
I give, I can give it a shot, Mr. President, I can let you, how about that?
When we, um, did the Shopping Center over where Walmart is, that's where we started this. And we designated all these places, uh, all over in the city, uh, so that the improvements that are made in those areas, the, the property taxes that are paid on them at the time that, uh, of course, the improvements are made and the difference between the taxes that were paid and are paid, like on that shopping center, goes into a fund that we're able to use for the infrastructure in those particular districts. And only in those particular districts. And it's turned out to be a real good thing for us, and we got money that, that we can use for this kind of thing.
And by district, you're not referring to council districts, you're referring to...
No. What happened several years ago, the legislature made it set up where it would be possible to take additional funds for economic development purposes. And, uh, you can establish a TIF district, and all the additional money that come in from that can be set aside for redevelopment within that district or within that area. And that's what we did. Not only us, but a lot of cities around the state of Alabama did the same thing. And that's how a lot of them are doing, a lot of infrastructure on new development and some old developments there. That's how they do it. That's where the funds come from.
It was amazing, the difference in the taxes paid on that strip shopping center that it was. Seems to me we had, we demolished about 30 houses over there.
About 30?
Fifty-three.
About 30 or so, how many?
Fifty-three.
Oh, 53 houses?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I didn't keep up with it.
That fund generates, I don't know if I should say it or not, I guess I can, generates a little over $300,000 a year.
That, we're, uh, you know, we have a good problem downtown about the parking, and we're gonna take that building, and we also own property behind this, an undeveloped parking lot, and then extend it all the way over behind the Gadsden Times, where we do have a public parking lot. So it'll be lighted, it's gonna be really nice.
Oh, you're talking about the other one, okay.
So it's, it's gonna help, help everybody on parking downtown. And also, we just finished the parking lot by the Pittman all the way back through there, which is, uh, I think we got a stripe at yet, but it's gonna, that's gonna be a big help on that end of town, too.
Just wanted to be sure to make that distinction between council districts and TIF district districts, because, uh, you know, you'll have people who'll hear that and immediately say, "Well, you know, that parking lot's not in District 2."
It's, it's in the city district.
Yeah.
But this project is.
Those in favor to adopt, I'm sorry, those in favor to adopt the resolution and the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both the resolution and the ordinance.
Oh, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I have one more item that I, that I overlooked. Uh, it's, uh, I'd like to ask that we consider today a resolution authorizing an agreement with Sane and Associates for professional service.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to, uh, consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for passage. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two items, I think, to fund the new business. The first one is a resolution authorizing issues of a special event license for Ducks Unlimited. I'd ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is a yearly event that they, they have, this is just a special events license for, uh, the sale of, the use of alcohol. But we do a lot of events.
It'll be held on, uh, November the 22nd.
Yeah, I forgot to tell you that, yeah.
629 Broad Street.
Yeah.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, Mr. President, I have one more resolution, and this is authorizing Highway 411, uh, veterans dedication. So I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'd ask for passage.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, this was the resolution that the young people, uh, from Westbrook bought last week, uh, proclaiming, um, Highway 411 as, uh, in honor of the veterans from Afghanistan and Iraqi war. And since we committed, or I committed last week to make sure that we get it on this week, we're gonna bring it up on the new business. But also, I wanna say that I appreciate those young people and their patriotism and their thoughtfulness to honor those veterans, because again, we need to honor all of our veterans, as I think Mr. Harris said earlier, this is Veterans Week, month, that we set aside to honor veterans. But I also want to, uh, give another history lesson about our Iraqi veterans and our Afghanistan veterans. We have one who now proclaims to be one of those veterans who went over there and fought for all of those individuals in those countries to have the freedom to vote and to support, uh, whoever they want. But the same individual comes back here to Gadsden, Alabama, and tell me, "I can't vote on an issue." I, I just have a problem with those type of patriots. I don't think that's a very good patriot when you can go overseas and vote, I mean, fight to liberate countries, and then you come back home and you tell your folks, "I ain't gonna let you vote," because that's my personal belief. Personally, I believe a lot of things, but one of them is not to, uh, keep the citizens of Gadsden from expressing their desires and, and their needs. So hopefully, that veteran will, will understand what we're doing here and see what we're doing here. Maybe this will soften his heart to let the people in the city of Gadsden have an opportunity to vote like the people in Afghanistan and Iraq.
Any other new business?
We've forgotten to vote.
Vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is there any other new business?
Mr. President, I've got one. Do you have any?
No.
I've got one. I need to ask for unanimous consent, please. It's a resolution authorizing lease agreement with Breakaway Ministries for the lease of a gym at the old General Forest School Building.
Second.
We have...
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll make a move to adopt, please.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is a lease agreement between Breakaway Ministries. Like I said, for the old General Forest School Building, it's been sitting empty for a long time. It's been boarded up. Breakaway Ministries is gonna come in there and reopen this building, and no charge to the city of Gadsden. They're gonna come in and fix the building up. They're gonna mentor the kids in the city, try to keep the kids out of trouble. Uh, if anybody knows Eddie Nichols, he's a good guy, and he's really gonna, he really cares about the little kids of Gadsden and the youth of Gadsden. He's made a lot of difference in a lot of people's lives, and I really do appreciate Eddie for everything he's done. Eddie for everything he's done. And I'd just like to see Eddie get this building where he can make a difference in a whole city of Gaston. That's all I got, Mr. President.
This is just for the gym, right?
This is, correct, just for the gym only.
Okay.
They'll be responsible for all their upkeep. The city won't have to pay a penny on upkeep or nothing. And two, I talked with our insurance lady and she says anytime we have a building that's sitting vacant like this building, our insurance premiums are higher. Once we put someone into it, somebody occupies a building, our insurance premiums will go down. So that'd be another savings right there to the city of Gaston.
Any other discussion? Clark, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have one. I have an ordinance three oh nine authorizing conveyance of property on lots fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and block three of Shannon Hills to Jay Aldridge in the amount of seven thousand dollars. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clark, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Yeah, I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Is any discussion? Clark, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President.
Bill has one. No, go ahead, go ahead. I thought Robert was gonna do it. Go ahead. No. All right, uh, there's three resolutions that I'd like to ask unanimous consent to consider and they are, uh, authorizing a tax revenue enhancement agreement with the RDS for lodging taxes, uh, use tax and rental tax. This used to be done in one ordinance, but now they just want it divided up into the three, so ask for unanimous consent to consider this this morning.
Second. Clark, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider all three resolutions today as items of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
No, that's for passage, please, on all three.
Second.
Is any discussion?
Yes, this is a, actually, an agreement with Altech to collect our, our taxes for us. They've been doing that for several years and do a good job, I understand, so that's what this is.
Any other discussion? Clark, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all three resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all three.
Okay, is any other new business?
Special, well, now, special events license to be done?
Uh, we did that one.
Ducks Unlimited, we done, we did that.
No, Robert did it. I was going to, but he did it. Anyway, it's been done, yes.
Show you how much attention I pay to that.
Robert, so, so quiet, you didn't hear it, that's why.
Under the radar, under, under the radar.
Happens quite often, though.
Okay, department reports, committees, are there any? March by the mayor and the council?
Looking right at you. Want to tell you about Gaston City High School this morning, I'll let Billy elaborate on it, but it was very moving and Bob, I want to say, the strings, the band and the corps group were unbelievable. They really worked and it was very enjoyable and they honored the veterans and we really had a good time in a moving sort of way. Uh, don't forget tomorrow is Patriots Day luncheon at Convention Hall at eleven o'clock. Our speaker's gonna be retired Command Sergeant Major Leonard Cathy. Uh, he was the one we had here on Memorial Day, so we all remember that. Very moving speaker. So we'll have tickets to the door, so please come out and, and honor our vets. And the only thing I got left is, I want to take this opportunity to announce the fact that I was wrong about the coyotes, 'cause my yard's full of armadillos and I want the coyotes back. Did anybody having trouble with them things digging in your yard? They about to take me off. I think I know where we can buy two coyotes. We'll work it out, saw it, God, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everyone that came out last Tuesday night for the trick or treat on Wall Street. We had a record crowd, that's probably between forty-five hundred and five thousand people on that street and I really want to appreciate everybody that came out. I know we had a good, safe Halloween down there that night. And Chief, do you want to talk about Halloween? Do we have a pretty safe Halloween here in the city of Gaston?
Yes, sir, the reports I got the next day showed no unusual occurrences or anything like that.
Okay, good, so that means everybody was behaving themselves that night, it seems like. I also do want to thank the council for passing this, uh, lease for Breakaway Ministries once again. It was really important to me, it's really important to the city and the lives of these young people that can get changed. That's all I have.
I saw on television this morning, the, on the Today Show, they were, they were saying that, uh, they put their parents up to about five or six kids, tell them that they ate all their candy.
That was funny.
And those kids were raising candy, man, they were crying and, I thought that was pretty mean, to tell you the truth.
It was, it was real funny, Bob. One of the little girls said, "It took me two hours to get this candy and you came with me, honey."
Be surprised how often.
It was good, it was good.
You don't hate anything, huh?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead and talk.
There's been, uh, recent, uh, weeks and days, a lot of talk about Sunday, uh, sales or seven-day alcoholic sales and, and I think, uh, I'm encouraging this council to, uh, to, uh, pass a resolution, not in favor of it, not opposed to it, but to let the people have a right to vote on it. So I'm gonna ask the, our city attorney to draw up such a resolution, we'll consider it when we get back from our trip. But I think the people should have a right to vote on it, whether you're for it or against it. And I'm not, I'm not pro or con of this. I think we ought to have that right. So we've been asked to, uh, to make a resolution, so let's do it.
We can probably do that without him having to write it up, just do it.
Uh, let's, let's, he's gonna, he's gonna write it up.
Take about.
He needs to practice, this is his first day.
About two paragraphs is all he needs.
Yeah.
Or he can, or he can go to one of the older ones that we've done.
Yes, well, I was gonna say, Lee.
Change a bunch of them. Change one word.
Just look up some of those old ones we've sent before and that never, has never happened and just change a word and you got it there.
Well, I'm not doing this for the legislature, I'm doing it for the citizens of Gaston. They, they have a right to vote on it and that's who I'm talking about. You know, whether it has any bearing on the, our legislature or not, probably won't, but we, we should support the right to vote.
Derek?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll piggyback on that just a little. I just, I, I, I just think, I, I think it's worth noting, when you look at, uh, at other counties, um, in other areas of the state where the council, where a city council presents anything, whether you're talking about a, 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 a resolution of this nature or, or any other item, uh, when the council unanimously presents something to them, uh, there's typically some meaning behind that and, uh, that legislative delegation typically, uh, you know, hears that, recognizes the fact that it was presented unanimously and, and follows through with it. It's unfortunate, we've had a history where that hadn't really meant anything and that's, uh, for me, that's concerning, uh, because, uh, you know, when you can get a, a body of this, of this nature to do something unanimously and present something unanimously, I think that should mean something. So, um, I won't beat that dead horse with a stick, I'll just, uh, you know, just wanted to make that point. I want to also speak to the veterans program that was, uh, conducted and held today at Gaston City High School. Most people do, do not know that I, I'm, I'm a veteran and I don't necessarily, uh, wear my badge, uh, you know, to, to, to announce it, but, uh, I'm proud of that fact. I don't know that I was a very good soldier, but, uh, but I was a soldier at, at some point. Uh, and I, often I was sharing with them a story this morning, um, my first experience with a, with an inspection. And inspections are pretty intense. If you have ever been in the military and been through one, they're very intense, actually. Uh, you know, they, they tend to cause ulcers at, at some level. And, uh, and of course, there I am, standing in front of this very, uh, prominent figure. Uh, his name was Captain Mahoney. Uh, Captain Mahoney was a very tall, about six-four, six-five, very tall, uh, relatively young, uh, ca- officer. And, uh, he stood in front of me and he said, uh, "Private Williams, uh, where are you from?" And I said, "Alabama, sir." And he said, "Well, Alabama." He said, "So they make soldiers in Alabama?" And I said, "Yes, sir, mighty fine soldiers as well." He said, "Let's not get carried away, private." Especially with your shoes looking like two Hershey bars, let's, let's, let's not get carried away. But, um, but what I will say, you know, about that is one, uh, that I, I think it's important that we continually and on an ongoing basis continue to honor and, and reverence our veterans and the service that they offer. Uh, and, um, and secondly, I want to, I want to just, you know, make a kind of a, 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 a personal, um, a personal plea. Um, you know, I, I, I'm one that believes, uh, that, uh, while I don't think that we should be at the state that the, uh, that the, the nation of Israel is in terms of requiring military service, I don't think we're there and I don't want us to be there, but I can tell you that I'm a different person because of that experience. Uh, I think every young male ought to go through some type of boot camp experience because I can tell you, it changed me. It changed me and made me a better person. It made me appreciate some of the, the things that I took for granted before I, before I actually went through boot camp. So, you know, for what that's worth, you know, I just thought I would put that out there. But again, I was really touched by that, uh, by that ceremony today and it just really brought back some memories, really did, brought back some memories. Now, I, you know, I'm not apologizing for having not fought in a foreign conflict. I don't necessarily look, look to do that anytime soon, but, uh, but I, but I am proud of my, my, my service. Um, I, I told the young lady, uh, who's, uh, come before this council, uh, once before, uh, she, she needed a little publicity for her five K event, so I told her I would be sure to mention it. There's a five K against bullying and teen suicide. The, uh, race director is a young lady by the name of Ariel Raleigh, uh, and, uh, she's been very diligent and very consistent in each year conducting an event. Uh, this year's event, um, is, is a run for a reason, is her slogan, and it's gonna be held on November sixteenth, uh, at the Gaston Amphitheater, or at least that's where it'll start, and, uh, and it'll begin at four P M. Again, that's November sixteenth at four P M. at the Gaston Amphitheater for, and so for those of us, whether you're a runner or not, if you have the opportunity to go out and support that event, I would ask that you, that you do that. Ariel is, uh, she represents what's good about our young people in the city. Those of you who come into contact with her know that, so, uh, so again, I ask that we would, uh, support that event and that's all I have.
Millie?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I too will, uh, Ariel was there at pre-council today and I, I tried to put her on the spot and I know I should not have done that, but I asked her if she wanted to speak before the council this morning because, you know, the last time she spoke to us, you know, she was just so magnificent, you know, in her speech, you know, and, and we just all admired the way she could make a presentation to us, uh, as a child, as a young, young adult, a young lady. Uh, and, but she said, "No, I don't, I don't have anything to say." But I wish she had gone on and, and made a presentation to the council, you know, about the event that she has coming up. But, uh, keep that in mind, um, the event that Councilman Williams just mentioned to you. Uh, Councilman, Councilman Williams, I, you know, I too am proud of the service that I render to this country. And I wear mine, I wear mine on my tag and on my cap, you know, and, and various, uh, events that we attend, you know, uh, here in the city and, and state, you know, because I am very proud of the fact that I served in Vietnam as a combat veteran. So, and I encourage everybody, uh, to just say, you know, when you see a veteran, you know, I, I still say again, just tell them thank you. Just if you see anybody in a uniform that has been in a uniform for the United States of America, just say thank you for your service, you know, that would mean, that means more to them than anything else.
Absolutely.
The event that we had at First Friday, we had veterans, uh, I mean, Vietnam veterans, uh, Memorial Day at, uh, First Friday at the museum and it was very, it was very, uh, encouraging to see guys, you know, that, that we had, uh, had some similar experiences, you know, with the same units, you know, when we were there, but it was very interesting. But keep our veterans in mind, no matter what you do, they deserve your, 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 your thanks. They deserve your thanks. Boys and Girls Club's coming right along. Uh, it's, it's moving right along and like we said, you know, we're hoping that by the first of December, the first, uh, organization, the, the organization will be opened under the new, new leadership and we're just hoping that that happens. So keep, stay tuned, we'll get the East Gaston Boys and Girls Club back, uh, back, back on the road again. Stay tuned for that. Uh, daylight saving time's gone, you know, it gets darker earlier, which, you know, I really rather like to have the daylight, but, you know, it gets darker earlier. And that, in, that in effect, you know, in effect, gives those people who have ill intent, you know, longer time or more time or earlier time to start with their misdeeds. So I would just encourage everybody to look out for your neighborhood, your community, uh, just when, when you see things that you know aren't right in your neighborhood, call the Gaston City Police. They're waiting on your call. Don't wait until you see something that has already happened, but you, and you thought it was gonna happen. Be proactive and call because the police will respond to issues that you have in your neighborhood. And, uh, last but not least, you know, the, the situation that we have, you know, with, with our representatives, you know, not wanting to give you the opportunity to vote on the issue that you might want to vote on. Uh, I, I don't understand how my personal convictions can keep you from voting on an issue that you deem necessary for you. Uh, I too am a, I, I too am a holy man, I, I attend church services, I believe, just like those persons say they do. Uh, I don't, but at the same time, I don't get up on Sunday morning and get, get my big bass boat out and go to the lake and fish all day long. Uh, i- i- if I wanted to, if I wanted to make the Sabbath so holy, then I would condemn everything that you do except attend church services on Sunday. Give you the right to vote is all that anybody will ever ask for. And I think this council is unanimous on that fact, that we think and we know that you deserve the right to vote on any issue brought before you for the benefit or for the well-being of the city of Gaston or personal interest. And that's all I have to say about that.
Mayor?
I want to tell Ben a quick story about the first armadillo I ever saw. I was on guard duty down at Fort Polk, which is about, me and another guy, sixty miles from my nearest town, and we were about ten miles out past that sixty mile, I think. But, uh, anyway, he starts yelling, we're on a big building, he's got one side and I got the other. He starts yelling and I thought something was wrong, I took off around the other side and he said, "Look, look." And I said, "What is it?" And he said, "It's a possum with a shell on it." He had, he had never seen one, I'd only seen pictures myself.
Digger.
Anyway, uh, on the, uh, the veterans, uh, I, I may be a little off on my statistics, but, uh, I think there's around eight hundred thousand former, uh, military men and women who are having a hard time getting their benefits, whatever they might be, uh, you know, and I'd like to say if we could throw Congress in a foxhole for about two days over in Afghanistan, they might speed that up. And then I think there's around four hundred of those, uh, that haven't gotten their benefit, four hundred thousand, that are wounded warriors, you know, they have handicaps and all that and it amazes me, it takes three years to get you benefits. I just, uh, I don't understand it, but anyway, that's all I got.
I only have one other important thing to say. You know why a chicken crosses the road? It shows an armadillo can be done.
You're talking about roadkill now. I'm glad you brought that up about the museum because the rest of the month, the museum of art downtown is gonna have on display, uh, the veterans stuff in there. And by the way, I'm gonna tell my age now, Bob. I ran into a guy that was bored shit with me fifty-two years ago in that place. Fifty-two years and that man's still living.
That makes you eighty-nine.
Say what?
That makes you eighty-nine.
I don't believe I'd have said that here. We'll talk about that after.
Fifty-nine.
Now you got it, now you got it. But that was uncanny. I just missed to mention a risk and he, and he said, "Oh, I scored that shit." You know, I said, "Well, that's funny, they just sunk it on Pensacola Bay out there about[1785.73] twenty miles. It's now reef."
And you know, Mayor, it's, it's amazing, it's amazing how it seems like, now, this might not be true, this is just my own, people tell me I'm not entitled to an opinion, you know, because, you know, you, 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 you're in the public eye, but it seems like those persons who, who have been in combat have a harder time getting their benefits from the federal government than those persons who have been in the support unit.
It's because they're not able, that's the problem.
That's, that's just my, that's just my thought. And I think I'm right. Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of announcements. New Veterans Day holiday next week, Monday's garbage route will be collected on Tuesday. Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday's route will be on schedule. Also, due to the National League of Cities Conference, the city council will not meet next week. The next regular meeting will be Tuesday, November the 19th. I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn. This meeting is adjourned.